Today is Wednesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Our first action that we need to consider is the minutes from the April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
I move approval of the minutes from April sixteenth.
All right, spin motion in a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved. We'll now move to our council administrators' report. Ms. Kidd?
Yes, my family will proceed with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, fiscal year begins, which we all know, July first. We are respectfully asking each council to begin identifying the nonprofits, projects, schools, organization, and initiatives you want to support for this upcoming fiscal year. The majority of transactions have been completed for each of the district offices. However, we have a few transactions pending for districts seven, eight, and nine. I struck District Five. Think you have an event next week, and I have some clarity on it, your J C three meeting.
Yeah, that's been taken care of.
Yeah. So, so just correction, seven, eight, and nine. Councilors Alexander, Clark, and Tate, I think you guys know what those items are, but it's our intent to have them out by the close of business next Friday. The I M S department has received our new laptop computers, and the distribution of those will be occurring over the next couple of weeks or so. We have some information that we need from you, so we hope that each of you will respond accordingly. The planning for the Gallery of Distinguished Citizens is underway, and the scheduled date is July twenty-second at the Birmingham Museum of Art. Suggested time is five-thirty to seven-thirty P. M. Handout has been provided for each of you to give you an idea of what the presentation on the second floor will look like, and maybe some details relative to an inaugural flyer announcing the event over at the B C R I, and then maybe a typo on there, and they say four o'clock, but suggested time is actually five-thirty. We're working through plans for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-nine Birmingham City Council training and development date. We have a conditional agreement from the administration to allow some of its department heads to participate, but we tentatively set October sixteenth or seventeenth for the training. To date, Director Tom Albreton from the Alabama Ethics Commission has confirmed his participation, so we'll be working with you on a save the date and the development of those plans as they materialize. As relates to the two thousand and twenty-six Alabama Legislative Session, this is just a reminder that the Jones Group during the recent Governmental Affairs Committee meeting encouraged the Birmingham City Councilman Mayor Woodburn to begin working on its legislative agenda in September, which would include by December, the advertising in the Alabama Messenger and/or pre-filing of deals that are of importance to the city of Birmingham. I think they provided that in a handout. The two thousand and twenty-six Legislative Session begins January thirteenth and ends May the eleventh. Just as a footnote, the primary elections were moved from the fourth Tuesday in May to May nineteenth. So, again, they want to be out by the time the primary elections began. Lastly, the Business Council of Alabama Governmental Affairs Conference is scheduled for August eighth through the tenth in Point Clear at the Grand Hotel. All conference attendees must be registered by July fourteenth. To date, we only know of one council district that will be participating. If there are others, you're on the clock. I can tell you that the host hotel is fully occupied, and they are pushing attendees to the secondary hotels. That concludes the administrators' report. Mr. President.
Mr. President, may I give just a little bit more context around the gallery?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Dean.
Okay, as you can see, there are three iterations. You see what is down there on the second floor now, which is this unit that holds some of, I think it's P E P paperwork. We're proposing option one and not two, but certainly it is to you to change, to do whatever the council. But as you can see, there will be a T V in that unit that will have a continuous flow of all the names and the faces and the people who will be inducted due to the fact that we have run out of wall space. Also, the tentative time, as Jeff had said, was five-thirty to seven-thirty, or six to eight. Nothing is firm. We do have the date reserved at the Museum of Arts, and also, we can be flexible about July if that is of concern to any of you. We want to make sure that this is appropriately rolled out in a timely manner. And the names also, the inductees this year, as you know, we will not do a bust, and I think that is good. The bust have gone up from two thousand dollars per unit to about four thousand dollars per unit, and given that we would be wanting to induct eight people, that would have been sixteen thousand dollars. So, that is, we are going to just do some kind of handout to them, and then in the unit that you see on option one, where above the T V, we're proposing to put nameplates, little small nameplates that will be displayed of every person that will be inducted in the years to come, so that we still are working on to see the dimensions of that and the dimensions of the nameplate, so we can anticipate when this might sunset, because we'll run out of space with that at some time. So that should be giving you all an idea of how long we can carry this forward. And we are continuing, and I know there was some concerns about budget, we are continuing to work with that. We are certain that we will come in under, way under what it was the last time, which I think it was held off-site at Regent's Park. So since we're using a city facility, which is the Museum of Arts, we've gotten waivers, and that fee should be under four thousand dollars just for that venue. So we're looking at somewhere around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars due to food and the plaques that we're giving away and other things that support this here. So that is almost thirty thousand dollars less than what it was the last time we did it.
Counselor Clark.
Pardon me, because I don't recall, but did we, I know this is kind of a buildup, like we haven't, we've missed some ceremonies. Do we have all the honorees identified?
No, we have not. So, because we have not, you know, done this, I mean, I think Counselor Abbott is the only one of us who has any experience with how this may have worked in previous quadrennia. But we didn't, we didn't do it in two thousand and twenty-one because of the pandemic. So we missed, you know, the four inductees that would have normally occurred at that time. So we're trying to pick back up the-
But they were selected, they were selected but not inducted.
No, they weren't selected even.
They were nominated.
Yeah, we just, we didn't do the-
Were nominated, okay.
Yeah, we didn't do any of it. So, you know, we're, I don't know if you recall back to some of our previous work sessions, we talked about, you know, whether or not we wanted to carry on this tradition, and, you know, at the time, the council said, yes, we would like to do this. So, Pro Tim Alexander and myself have been talking with Cheryl and Jeff about how to proceed, and so Cheryl informed us that in previous instances, this would go through the Administration and Government Affairs Committee. So Pro Tim Alexander and Cheryl are talking about formalizing the, you know, the selection, so that information should be coming to us soon.
Okay. And we think we'll have, we'll be ready to actually have the induction on this day?
That's our objective, yes. I do have some questions about the infrastructure piece on the second floor. So, with, would the renderings that you have here actually replace that existing freestanding wall?
No. Actually, what we're trying to do is salvage and to cut the budget as much as we can. The only thing is these units that's on the side that will hide the speakers that will be coming out, those will be units that will be slid up to that and installed as an attachment to that, and those things that you see at the bottom are storage for other pieces, like maybe any hardware that would be needed if there was some kind of event that was down there, so that will act as storage. So that will remain, and a T V unit will be placed on that side. There's another one that's on the other side that will remain, so that area is already hot, so to speak. It has electricity in the wall, so we won't have to worry about that.
Okay, so this would, this unit that's depicted here would sort of just install in front of that current wall?
Just be pushed in.
Okay. Got you. And Counselor Abbott, you had a question?
I just heard the word sunset, and I kind of thought we had already sunset this thing, and now it's back. And I thought sunset was a good idea. So, just, just a thought about sunset.
Yeah, so, you know, we are going in a significantly different direction, you know, and not proceeding with trying to install the bronze bust plaques, and the primary reason for that is not only just the cost, but there's no remaining space on the walls on the second floor.
Maybe A I will save us.
Yeah, so we're sort of going in that direction with this unit having a digital monitor installed, so all of the new inductees will have a, you know, digital rendering of a bronze bust along with some information about those individuals displayed, and it'll just kind of go in a rotation, is the idea. And Cheryl, you're saying in addition to that, they would have plaques installed on the, on this unit itself?
Yeah. That is, that is a suggestion, that we would have one so that we can, they can, people can see their name on the wall since others are seeing their name on the wall, so that was just somewhat of a compromise, but-
Right. And then at the actual induction ceremony, you're suggesting that we actually have like a plaque that they-
Yeah, we're going to give them something to hold.
Right, okay.
And it's a whole lot cheaper than four thousand dollars.
Say again?
I said it's cheaper than four thousand dollars. That's what the bronze would have cost.
I hope so.
Got you. Yeah, got you. All right. Counselor Clark?
Thank you. So, with the plaque, is that more or less like the year they were inducted and then a nameplate?
Yeah, their name.
I mean, it's not going to be-
It's like a tag.
Like a tag?
Yes.
Just so at a glance, you can know who's there to know that you might want to stand there and wait on it to roll around.
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Any additional questions about the administrators' report? All right, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and we're going to go out of order here. We want to hear from our update on the transition from Avenue to H D L, and it looks like Mr. Aberhart is going to give us that presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about transitioning from the previous provider to H D L. My name is Robert Aberhart, and I serve as the Deputy CFO, and I'm joined by three of my teammates, and so I'll allow them to introduce themselves, and then we'll go ahead and hop right into the presentation, okay?
Okay.
Hello, my name is Dari Tria Dean. I serve as Tax and License Administrator.
I'm Andrea Shaku. I serve as Chief Administrative Analyst.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica McGee. I serve as Principal Administrative Analyst.
All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and hop right in. So the transition from our previous provider to H D L, all right, and so we'll get started with Dean.
We will start with Ms. Andrea. She will do our introduction from our previous provider to our current, and then we will kind of break down more so within, and then we will break down a little more with Ms. McGee, and then I'll finish with the physical portion of it, the transition and finance.
Okay, so, as you know, we changed providers, our third-party provider. Beginning of September of last year, we began the transition probably in August, but in September is when our previous provider, everything sort of was supposed to be finished. So with the new provider, we have some things that we're able to do that we weren't able to do with our previous provider. We couldn't adjust entries into the system. We couldn't do anything. We basically could only look at what was going on. So if something was wrong, something wasn't right, we had to continually call and try to get it updated. So we would go between, between, we'll get calls from taxpayers, we'll try to call, so it was just a whole lot of delay, whole lot of frustration. Right now, we don't have that problem, because the system that we're using is for us, it's for the city of Birmingham. So as our taxpayers have questions, we're able to go in and see what's going on. A minimum amount of monitoring and compliance, that was supposed to be a part of our previous provider also, was compliance and monitoring, but it turned into more of a data entry. It was to get the, get the information in. Compliance was missing. We could never get a good report, so we couldn't do the compliance either. So there were a lot of things that were going on previously that we're now able to pull up reports, see, and actually start to try to monitor what's going on. We were unable to communicate with the taxpayers. So if the taxpayer put something into the system, we could not always see it. They had more than two systems going. So we eventually found out that they too were, had a system that they were using other than themselves, and they would not let all the information out because it was proprietary. And so we couldn't see, so there were a lot of things that were just missing, and they only allowed certain visibility. There were things they could see we could never see. If we got a payment in, someone could make a payment, we may not see it for two weeks. So if we had a taxpayer that came and they wanted us to be able to give them something, we couldn't give it to them because we couldn't see it. So it just created, this new system that we have, like I said, is designed for us, and so the main thing is, is that we're back in control. We have more control, we have more visibility, and we are able to serve the citizens and the taxpayers without someone in between. So we're able to do that.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about why change. We wanted a system that specialized in municipal-focused, improved revenue recovery, enhanced technology in reporting, better customer service, and transparent fee structure, seamless transition and integration. So, specialized in municipal focus. H D L is municipal-specific systems, meaning if we needed something changed, it only affects the city of Birmingham. It does not affect everyone else. With our previous provider, the changes that was made for the city of Birmingham affected everyone's system. So it became a, do we want to make this change, and how will it affect everyone versus we need this change done for the city of Birmingham? Improved revenue recovery. H D L allows us to view prior month's payments within the system and has multiple search forms. So for example, if we were inserting a payment, we can see your previous month's payments. So we go, oh, their occupational tax dropped from a hundred thousand to fifty dollars. What happened? And with our previous system, we were not able to see that, which will make us say, we need to reach out to this taxpayer and see what has happened that caused this change. H D L has actual calculation, so we can actually see the calculations and not what someone else has entered. Daily import payment viewing and keying in real time, so if someone actually makes a payment at the front counter, we can refresh, and within a minute, we can see it at the back end, vice versa. If they make a payment online, we can actually see that payment. And as Ms. Andrea stated before, sometimes it would take up to two weeks with our previous provider if someone made a payment online on their system before we would actually be able to say, to be able to see it. Enhanced technology in reporting. Customers can actually go onto our new platform and update their information theirself. They can log in, they can change any information, they can upload documents, and we can get that done instantly as opposed to them having to mail it in, fax it in, or wait on somebody else to do those changes for them. View actual reports as well as the ability to create reports. So we were never able to get reports for our previous provider, and a report, for example, would be if we wanted to see all of the businesses, all of the restaurants in Territory Six, we can run a report to see that. If we wanted to see everyone who was delinquent, we can run a report to see that. So we have the ability to customize our reporting system, where with our previous provider, they had to build that report for us, and a lot of times, we never got those reports. Transparent fee structure. H D L pricing is based on a flat fee and annual price point. That's going to be something that Ms. Dean is going to hone in on, so I'm going to skip ahead. Okay, so the main difference between the two systems, everything is now back in-house. So the city of Birmingham is now able to control business licenses, whereas with our previous system, our system, they were kind of in control of the business license. So we have the ability to check and see if you're really in compliance, check and see if you have the correct business license before things are being released. Tax discovery and recovery. So once again, we are able to see things in real time. So if we go, hey, you haven't paid sales tax, let's do a little digging on this to see what you're doing, where we did not have the ability to see that in our previous system. Customer support, limited availability. We did have a dedicated telephone number and reps with our previous provider, however, sometimes we still never got an answer, whereas now we have a dedicated team that answers within minutes. And we have weekly meetings, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so that we can discuss any issues that we are having and how to improve. Reporting and analysis. So once I said, we were, we would have to request reports from our previous provider, sometimes we would get them, sometimes we would not. So in the system, we have a real-time dashboard that we're able to build our reports ourselves, so we don't have to wait on anyone to create those for us. And then a Dracy log. So we had a log where we would ask them to make certain changes, our previous provider, and those changes were never made. We had some issues that were never addressed, whereas with our new provider, those issues are being addressed daily. Like I said, we meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so if there's any issues that are not really being addressed, or they need more clarification, we hone in on those days. And the physical impact. Transition costs within approved budget, projected long-term savings from efficiency to more efficient. No disruption to revenue collection. So when we speak on transition costs within approved budget, to do a comparison, if you would turn to the next slide on page ten, we'll see, this was our previous providers, this was our last fiscal year with them, which was the fiscal year twenty-three. Here, this was a breakdown of our total fees for our annual. We spent roughly one point three million per that fiscal year, and this included them doing administrative fees, auditing fees, business license apps and renewals. So with our current, if we go to the next slide, this is our current implementation rate. So our current rate is roughly one million, and within those fees, that includes software license fees, the implementation costs, data conversion, training costs, integrations and development, business analyst, process consulting, and annual subscription. Those are our price points, and to rev back a little bit. I projected long-term savings from efficiency to more efficient, if all taxpayers, so our hope is to get all taxpayers online. If we could get more online, everybody implemented it, going and paying online, that will cut back on our current costs. We currently have a cost for lockbox, which is a wholesale lockbox, so that with the wholesale lockbox, that only includes them, the P N C Bank, receiving mail, opening the mail, scanning it in to us and cashing the checks. We still on the back end have to come in and process each payment received. So that current price is about fifty-four hundred monthly, so we want to kind of cut back on those costs. And also, within implementing online processes, we cut back on customers filing accurate returns, instead of them just mailing in what they want to pay, or taxpayers mailing in what they think is due. If you go online, you know what you have to pay. It's already published for you. We receive our funds immediately, so every night, our journal entry imports roll over at midnight. So we, every amount of money that was paid during that, automatically goes to our port, so we can upload it on the general ledger. We sell out, we save on mailouts, so annual business license renewals, we won't have to have printing companies print those out, we will save it because we will be able to market within our, within home. We'll be able to send out those mailouts online for all customers to locate, and we can cut back on overtime, excessive overtime, and an excessive personnel budget, which we kind of still need because everyone has been sending, all the taxpayers have been kind of mailing in their payments to our lockbox. So now we need overtime to kind of get with that backlog back into effect so we can get the money back on the books. We have no disruption to revenue collection, revenue is deposited in real time, and we have no mailing errors. So skip back. So if we kind of move towards the modern style of having everyone pay on time, I mean, have everyone paying online, this will allow customers to, you know, process their payments, and taxpayers to process their payments online from the comfort of their home. It'll create a digital, digital kind of more world and make us more efficient today as a city, transitioning from paperless to actual online services, and that's what we're trying to kind of get to our system to.
Thank you so much, team. That's, you know, that's pretty much it. Yeah, we are doing our best to get in an even better position. The online payments that they mentioned is really something that we can, that will really help us become even more efficient. So just, you know, think about exploring, I know the state of Alabama requires that taxpayers to pay online. That's it. No mailing in. We'll consider like having the front, the front counter and the front office still open to accommodate customers who come in, but just to become even more efficient, that online payment, that would be great for us. So just some thoughts, but we are delighted to have H D L companies, working with them. They are very user-friendly, and just the fact that the reconciliation piece is what we love, we can balance, and it don't take all day, and it don't take months. We get real-time reporting, and that's very important to the accounting process. So, again, we're entertaining the questions you might have, but that's the transition from our previous provider to H D L.
Thank you. So just judging by the fact that, you know, with the previous provider, we were getting, you know, I was getting regular requests from business owners for an actual copy of their business license, you know, and on several occasions, we had to, you know, intervene in that situation. I know it was the same with my other eight council colleagues. That hasn't happened since this transition has occurred. I don't even know that we've been contacted by one business owner, much less several, so that's a good sign. And so we're currently accepting payments via mail, is what you're saying, but we would like to, you guys would like the city to transition to a hundred percent online payments?
Yes, I mean, that online payment is our option now. We have several taxpayers that take advantage of it now, but to make it a requirement, to file certain taxes, not all, I mean, some of your business license, because there are certain requirements that's in addition to someone getting their business license. For an example, we might need a copy of your plumbing license, so we can't just issue your business license, we got to see that certification. But sales tax, use tax, lodging tax, rental tax, those are things that they can pay online and be done.
Right.
And right now, we are, we are, we are- And right now, we are, we are, we are, we receive quite a bit of mail. So, that volume of mail decreasing, that increases our productivity.
So, let me ask you this. One of the things that was promised with the previous provider was that they were going to do compliance work, i.e. making sure that people who were operating a business within the city limits of Birmingham actually had a business license to do so. Is that something that is included within the scope of work for HDL?
I'll say, I'll say this. One of the things that we are able to do is go out and to make sure that taxpayers are in compliance. We are kind of short-staffed, and because of the volume of checks, kind of have, trying to do multitasking. Where, you know, processing the checks, making sure that taxpayers' payments are processed on time. But we have revenue examiners that are kind of doing that work as well. That takes them away from going out into the field, making sure that taxpayers are in compliance. And taking that, and even taking the education process to make sure that taxpayers understand what's required. We can't really do that like we want to because of the volume. HDL, HDL gives us that capability, but I don't let the teams, because they works directly with HDL. Can y'all speak to this question real quick as it relates to that?
So, as it relates to compliance, with our previous provider, what you're talking about, they said they would make sure that everyone had a license because one of the things they also do was recovery. So, that was it. No, it didn't quite work out like that. The city of Birmingham has quite a large volume. And so, I think sometimes when people, it's easy to say, but it wasn't easy to do. We are the ones now back in charge. And so, we're going to be running delinquency lists and doing what we've always done. We just go out to the taxpayer, visit them, send them letters and all those things. We're now going to be able to, we're going to be able to do that now. What we used to couldn't get, we couldn't even get a delinquency list. So, if you were delinquent, I didn't even know you were delinquent, unless I happened to run into you in the system. Now, with this coming up, it'll be a few months. Once we're caught up, we're going to be able to actually get back to compliance.
Mr. President.
Counselor, Chief, go ahead.
I was just going to speak kind of directly to your question. HDL does not provide that service. Our in-house team will be doing it. I think that's what you were asking, right?
Right, yeah. And it sounds like, you know, just to kind of take it a little further, it sounds like the quicker we can transition to 100% online payment system, you know, that will free up staff because they're not, you know, going through the mail, literally, and dealing with paper checks and having to, you know, spend valuable hours, you know, versus being able to be in the field, you know, making sure, doing compliance work.
Right.
So, Counselor Clark, or Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I wanted to know, are we completely through with Avenue? Are we having to wait on them to give us anything, or are we done with them?
Yeah, so I really don't want to speak to that because I think we have some.
Right, so, two things. What Mr. Abbott is noting, there's still some resolution that's happening via the Office of the City Attorney. But the information that we need to this, today, we have that, Counselor Abbott, but there are areas where the Office of the City Attorney is still leaning in in terms of process with Avenue. But we've completely separated from them, to your point.
Okay. And then, early payment. I've had people complain to me, like I can fix it, that they would like to pay their taxes and pay for their business license early and that the city won't let them. It seems to me if somebody wants to pay us in a hurry, let's take their money while it's available. Is there a problem with people being able to pay early?
Yeah, as it relates to the business license, that is a concern with the business license. Go ahead and speak to that as well.
Okay. So, paying early, if you want to pay May 15th what's due for May, the month has not ended. So, we have people that want to pay early, but the whole month hasn't ended. Even with business license, your gross receipts are based to December 31st. So, we take an early payment, and you leave out three months of what you paid. It's not, it calls another problem. We don't know exactly how much because it's a sworn statement. So, the fact that you can't pay early is because it's not due yet. And we, you don't have all the information that you need to pay it early. So, that's what really stops that.
Okay, well, you know, I've been asked, and I know nothing about it, so. Security. You know, after our network interruption, it made me think a lot more about security. Like, if people are using this HDL system to do all these monetary transactions, how, how secure is their system and its interface with our systems, like?
Yes, ma'am, so.
I'm, you know, I hate to assume anything, that everything's fine, you know, because I thought we were fine before, and it turned out we weren't, so.
So, Ms. Abbott, the current system does not store any information. So, the taxpayer has to physically enter their information every single time. So, we're not, they're not saving any type of account, where they're not saving any banking information or anything like that. So, it's not, if the system was to have an interruption again, there was no data. There's no data saved in the current HDL system.
Well, that's good. I think that's all my questions for right now. I'm just kind of relieved that we finally have a system that works and that, you know, we don't get the complaints because clearly, it's not our job, it's somebody else's. But people are still going to complain to us.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a habit, so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Counselor Clark.
My question is about business license fee structure for nonprofits. And even though I run a nonprofit, it's not for me. We pay ours. But the city council with used ARPA funds to help with startup funding for the Magic City Tool Bank. However, they have been sort of at an impasse on their classification, whether they could be under Schedule 813 or Schedule 212. Because he may have inadvertently characterized what they do as leasing tools. They actually loan tools to community groups and other nonprofits, really, for no fee, but there is a restocking charge. So, sometimes, so they have to, they charge a nominal fee to handle. Handle the, it's like a handling fee, but it's not renting them out. So, so they really have to raise a lot of money to operate. They're, they have one employee who would be administratively severely burdened to do the monthly leasing, and then they don't make money off of it. They operate at a deficit, if you will. Like, they have to raise a lot of money to be able to buy tools, to be able to repair tools, to be able to, you know, pay their rent, pay their employee, their one employee. And so, the Tool Banks USA does their back office, but they're trying to stand up this, this organization. And so, it's onerous, really, that schedule that they're told they would fall over. So, we've had to give, contribute to them through a fiscal agent until they can get that straight. Because they don't. Ms. Shaku might know. Yeah, can you just, I mean, maybe, maybe it's semantics, but, or maybe it's just the way Kim Rafferty made it have to happen for the rest of the nonprofits forever.
Here, here's the thing. I've been here quite a long time. And only Ms. Abbott probably will remember when we did the charity, because she's the only councilperson that was here at the time. But when, it used to be all charities that were, say they were 501(c)(3), they were up on our schedule that was actually gross receipts. And we do have some people that are 501(c)(3)'s that actually help the community. They don't accept anything from it. The way they profit, the way they work is that it's, they get donations, and they're going to help you. They're not going to charge you anything. We have some people that say they are nonprofits and run a daycare center. They run a daycare center where they receive funds. So, one of the things about our nonprofit that's a 813, we're going to ask you, do you charge anything? Or are you a civic organization? If you look at Schedule 813, it tells you religious, civic organizations, or the like. So, if you're charging someone, although you may have a 501(c)(3) for the federal government, with us, you are charging them. But if you're actually doing a civic organization and that you are helping them, where would you get your money from? Whether you get it from us or another big group? And you're coming, but the citizen doesn't have to pay you anything. You're actually helping them. Once you charge them, you go up under whatever schedule that you would have been up under. And so, that's the thing, and I know exactly who you speak. And the application said renting tools.
I know, he told me. I said, well, you don't really rent them. They loan them.
Yeah, but that's, but that's what I'm saying. And even with a restocking fee. But our question is always very simple. Do you charge the people that you are helping anything? You may have a 501(c)(3). Some people don't have a 501(c)(3), but they're a civic organization. So, the thing is, it doesn't say you have to. It says you have to be a civic organization or religious.
So, so if they receive donations or had members, because I think the neighborhood associations are going to join or something. I think they're working out something.
And if he, and if they actually got their donations from wherever to operate their business, but you as the citizen come and you need their services, or you're a neighborhood, need their service. They don't charge that neighborhood. They're getting their funding from wherever they're getting it from. That neighborhood is able to borrow it, do what they need to do, and bring it back without a restocking fee, or whatever we're going to call it. Or rental fee, or whatever we're going to name it. So, if that's the case, you're, then you fit up under a civic organization. But if you're making money, that's not.
They're not making enough, but anyway.
And I understand, we have plenty of people who make nothing. But they, you know, but we say, zero is fine, but you still have to pay on the gross, even if it's zero. It's just a minimal amount.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Count, pretend, Alexander.
I believe Ms. Abbott has already asked this, and we'll use the word sunset.
Sunset.
That's a nice word.
But I like that one. So, I believe you answered what my thoughts were, because I had similar questions heard. So, we're done with the other system? Did we ever say the answer there? Have we sunsetted that process for using other system? I know there may be litigation and everything, but are we, do we have to use that for any archive or any historical data? Or we can just go straight into the HDL?
We go straight into HDL.
Okay, well, this is great. Well, I am excited to hear this and to know that we're moving into, you know, a new technological century of providing support. Because I do know that I had a new company that came into District 7, and I believe they had been another part of the country. So, this is their first time working with us here in Birmingham. So, there was some frustration, and, but I think they're, they're happy now, and they'll be very excited. And so, I just applaud you all. Thank you all very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Abbott and your team. Roughly, how many people are still on mailing? Y'all, do they count?
How many people are actually mailing?
Like, still, like, have, has a transition to online?
We probably process about 15,000 returns per month by hand that are physically being mailed into the city of Birmingham. And probably about between 7,000 and 10,000 that are being mailed to the lockbox that we still have to process on the backend.
Okay. So, do you guys have a plan, like, I hear what Mr. Abbott is saying, to kind of transition these individuals? Like, are y'all doing any type of teach-ins, like some type of educational classes to try to get people to come on aboard the train?
Right, yeah, just seeing the need as it is, we have begun having those conversations. We're speaking with the attorney and, of course, you know, the administration just to make sure we go about things the right way.
Well, I'm excited. I, you know, just listening to you guys' presentation, it just seems like the city is saving money, and you're not running into those challenges that you all were having with Avenue. So, congratulations, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, just one other question. Is there any way that we could offer any kind of incentive to people to do it online that would make them feel like they were getting a benefit by stopping the mailing business and getting into the online business? I, I don't know what that would be, but there ought to be some kind of way to incentivize people to make them do it of their own free will instead of us saying, we're cutting you off after this date, because they might just quit paying.
Right, well, one item that we are taking a look at is the ACH fee. It's a minimum fee. We can stand to waive that fee. It's, I think it's like a dollar and 25 cent per transaction. So, yes, that's something that.
Well, then you can add that big fat stamp they're having to put on that big envelope. That's expensive now. But I was just thinking, I know government has a difficulty with incentivizing people to do stuff, but it's a way to make people not angry that you forced them into something they didn't want to do, but that they've done it because they're getting something for it, you know?
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, something like that.
Yes, ma'am.
One last question I have is, businesses collect sales tax. They also pay occupational tax. Are, are they remitting that monthly through this type of process?
Yes.
Yeah, so, they, there's a possibility that they could do, also take care of all of that online as well, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And, and that occurs every month, right?
Every month, yes.
Right. Okay.
See, they've already saved $15 by doing the whole year online, so, you know.
Counselor Clark.
I just wanted to elaborate on Counselor Abbott's point about creating some kind of incentive. But, because we've been discouraging people from doing it online, you know, because of Avenue. Haven't we? I mean, I have. Because people would complain about doing it online and never getting the license. So, we would just say, you need to come downtown and come in person. So, you're, you got to overcome that, that we've been saying, don't do it online.
Yeah, well, you know, customer service is one of our core values. And so, if it takes going the extra mile to help educate the taxpayer, that we're, we're going to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Chief Sparks, while we're talking about this, if we were, I'm just going to take it a step further than what Counselor Abbott suggested and say, if we were to do some sort of, you know, temporary tax holiday to incentivize folks, you know, to make that transition, that would require an action of the council, if I'm thinking correctly.
Right, so, it's a couple of things. And what Mr. Abbott noted was the desire to move towards full online. That has not happened. They, they are still receiving the mail-in payments. What the mayor wanted us to do was a really intensive education process, which is why he was speaking of our core values in terms of notifying, because there probably, not probably, there was a significant amount of distrust in the system, in the old system. So, not only did we have the transition process, but it was also informing people of the new system, informing people of the availability. And I do think the next phase of that discussion, to your point, Counselor Abbott, Counselor Clark, Counsel President O'Quinn, is, okay, now, how do we encourage people to move with a trusting of the system and use the online portal? And so, we'll come back, we thank you all for those. We'll meet with the team, get with the mayor, and come back with you, to you all for recommendations on how we really aggressively push that as we do the education piece, too.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to our update on urban alchemy. And Alana Melton and Corey Stallworth will be presenting.
Good evening to the members of the council. I'm Alana Melton, and I serve as Director of Special Projects in the Mayor's Office of Governmental Affairs. Today, I'm here in my role, working with homeless strategy. And I want to start with our update on urban alchemy and just say, urban alchemy hit the ground running in Birmingham on January 6th. And if you remember what happened this year, that week, that was the week of the longest snow that I've seen in my adult life in Birmingham. And I think they earned their stripes that week because for the first time, we didn't have to worry about how we got folks experiencing homelessness out of the cold. We saw folks coming even on the interstate that were able to get to our warming stations, in addition to what the police department did. But we saw them bring people to the warming stations in droves. And that And that was their introduction to Birmingham, but also our introduction to them. I'm gonna move out of the way and ask my colleague Cory Stallworth to come and kind of go through the numbers with you, and then I'll come back and just talk about some of the wins and some things moving forward in just a moment.
Thank you, Alana. Good afternoon again. Cory Stallworth, I service Senior Deputy Director of Community Development. And so as Ms. Melton mentioned, that the UA team really hit the ground running, setting up a call center in January to be able to receive calls to directly triage any homelessness issues within the community, as well as they hired eighteen employees locally from the community to be able to be a part of their response team. And so what I want to go over with you today is a short presentation about all the incident types and primary outcomes that are related to some of the calls and issues that they have been receiving. And so if you look at the first page of the presentation, on the left-hand side, you will see a list of the type of incidents or calls that they have been receiving and go out into the community to assist. And so that's a total of one thousand four hundred and ninety-two incidents that they have responded to since January. And so again, there's almost fifteen hundred calls that BPD didn't have to go out and address, as well as fifteen hundred calls that were not caught up in our 311 or our 911 system.
Should I assume that P E H stands for Person Experiencing Homelessness?
Yes, that's correct. And so as you mentioned, those incidents on the left-hand side is Persons Experiencing Homelessness Engagement, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, as well as they assisted Persons Experiencing Homelessness. So that's really getting them to the resources and the housing opportunities. There was also twenty-two calls addressing laudering and removing individuals that were laundering around certain locations, as well as addressing ten incidents related to mental health concerns and five related to trespasses. And on the right-hand side of this presentation, you will see the amount of incidents that have been closed since they've been in existence. And so that's a little bit over sixteen hundred. And you can see that it's a little bit higher than some of the original calls because some of the incidents were outside of their scope, or some of the calls were counseled before they arrived on site, or the individual was not on site when they arrived. And so moving to the next slide, this is really a deeper dive into a lot of the services that have been provided over the last six months. And so as you can see in the yellow at the top, Housing Activities, the HART program has been able to support eighty-seven individuals with housing. And you can see the different categories of housing, first started with Coordinated Housing Assessments. And so that's working with our local partners and One Roof to be able to assess these individuals to get housing opportunities. We've also have referred forty-nine individuals to emergency shelters, also have helped eleven individuals with interim housing, as well as, which I really love, is referred individuals or diverted individuals and brought them back to their families. So there's twelve individuals that were reunited with their family to get the housing and support that they need. Also, another large component of the services is relationship building. And so this is very important as UA builds a presence in the community and also get buy-in from the community to really have a relationship and have a presence within the community which they're serving. And so you will see the numbers are very large as it relates to some of those social service activities that they have provided. And I won't list all of them, but you can see some of them include providing water, providing meals, providing clothing, providing information about other service providers, even helping folks obtain some of their vital documents. And so not all of the services will include housing, but we want to meet people where they are. And as people begin to trust the team, they will be able to help move them into a long-term sustainable housing opportunities. On the right-hand side, also continuing with those services are medical activities. And so you see eighty-nine individuals receive some level of medical attention, as well as you see mental health services. We have about forty-two individuals that were referred to Behavioral and Mental Health Services. And last but not least, transportation is a big service that they provide. And they have transported four hundred and seventy-five individuals. And so that transportation could be to some of these services. That transportation could be to some of the housing opportunities, as well as helping folks get to where they need to be at a certain time. And so again, these are just high-level report of all of the services and the impact, which has been very significant and very great in just six months. This is a pilot program for fifteen months, and so we look forward to making even greater strides in the future.
So that's the Urban Alchemy story by the numbers, but if I could just add a little bit more color to what Cory has shared. I remember when Urban Alchemy first came and we met with some service providers. The number one question was, was the city gonna cut those providers out? And was Urban Alchemy gonna get everything? And I think we now see the contrary is true. I think Urban Alchemy has absolutely increased the capacity for some of our service providers. I think no greater testament is that we have One Roof's current Executive Director, Gordon Sullivan, joining us, as well as Daniel Garrett, who leads the Street Outreach Team, where I know Urban Alchemy has helped that team's band with tremendously. Many of the calls that we have go directly to them and to One Roof's Street Outreach Team. We've also seen a significant amount of help to our police department and our fire department. Cory mentioned there are some calls that they just don't get anymore, and we don't have our police officers acting as social workers because the Urban Alchemy team is able to triage quite a bit of those calls, any calls that we get around homelessness or mental health concerns that come into 311. And also through our See, Click, Fix Act. We've also, I've talked about the rides, but I can't say enough about the warming station and then the mental health facilities. JBS has seen through the Creative Crisis Center an increase of number of folks who are able to get there from Urban Alchemy, as well as through our police department. So that partnership has grown. Quite frankly, the challenges are the ones that we know, right? The hotspots that we're all very much aware of. And so moving forward, some of the things that we've talked about is increase. Right now, we've charged them with being citywide, but we have had several conversations with how do we really drill down on some of our hotspots, the areas that we know to be of great concern. So we're having increased conversations with them about that.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alana, Cory, for this high-level presentation. I remember going to California with you and seeing Urban Alchemy do what they do in real time. And I've communicated, you know, with them as well, myself. And I've seen, you know, some situations and Artie just, you know, jumped right on it and sent, you know, the HART team over. And Mayor, I just really want to thank your team, Alana and Alyssa, for working with me with the sign code. We did get that, that issue taken care of. So the owner has posted no trespassing signs and barricaded the lot. And so the Salvation Army cleaned it up. And so thank you, Mayor Woodfin, Alyssa, and the team. But I just really appreciate, you know, what Urban Alchemy has been able to come here and turn around. I've, you know, again, seen Artie and his team in, you know, in real-time action and the interaction, you know, with, you know, people that experiencing, you know, homelessness. And so again, thank you, Alana. Thank you, Cory, for this robust report.
Pretam Alexander.
Yes, thank you all very much. I am appreciative of the report and the information that you've shared. I just wanted to be sure I had clarity on, as a former One Roof Board member, I was, just wanted to see where did they fit in the spectrum now? And when we talk about the continuum of care and housing assessments, so is that their primary role? Or is that still part of the umbrella of the system that we have to aid our unhoused?
The housing assessments? Absolutely. And Gordon could answer that better than I, not to put him on the spot. But I really kind of look at this as a three-fold partnership. The work that Cory and Megan get to do in community development, what we get to do in the mayor's office, and then we've been in locks-up with One Roof. And so all, anything that you hear moving forward will be our collective efforts. But absolutely, the housing assessment is part of what they do.
Thank you. And I know everything, every process isn't perfect, but I agree with you with the last cold weather episode and, you know, the inclement weather. Just seeing how the team approached that and the service we provided, I think it was just really outstanding. So I'm glad to see your confidence in that and your reporting that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I thank you for this report because we have lots and lots of homeless complaints. And so I'm always interested to know what we're doing. I wanted to ask you, I know what the word provided means, but when you refer people to things, what does that exactly mean? Or when they refer them? What, what is, what action is taken? Do they say, go over there? Or do they take them somewhere and introduce them to the people that are going to help them and?
That's a really good question. That is one of the unique things about them. They actually do have transportation, and so their referral comes with transportation. They take folks and oftentimes they pick them back up as well, if a ride is needed on the back end.
Okay, and if you created a service plan, what does that mean? It's on the.
Right. So they have what you call care coordinator. So we say case managers and that kind of thing, but they use the word care coordinator. And so if your, if your need is a little bit more complex, it's not just taking you to JBS and having a handoff. It may be a longer plan, and you may get a care coordinator through them that'll work on that plan with you, and they follow you through closeout. It's an individualized plan per person.
Okay. Okay, and down at the bottom, the SSI, SSDI, and SOAR? What are those?
So Social Security and Disability.
And SOAR? SOAR is the one I don't know what it means.
I don't remember what SOAR means, so we'll look it up and give it to you.
Yeah, acronyms are fun, but not as much fun when you don't know what they stand for. Well, you know, I appreciate what's being done because I can see a difference. I was, I parked my car next to Magnolia Park, Brother Bryan Park, yesterday at night, and I wasn't scared. And I wasn't worried that my windows in my car would be broken out because I had junk in the backseat. No laptops, just junk, but it might look good to somebody. So I'm interested in knowing how, how, for instance, we have a bunch of homeless people living under the bridge that's underneath Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard. What would, what would HART or Urban Alchemy do about that bunch of people that's under the bridge? Can you sort of describe how they do their work?
Yes, so either there would be a stakeholder or someone from our office that would dispatch the Urban Alchemy team out to that site. And what they will do is assess each individual there through having a discussion with them to see what resources they may need on why they are in that particular area at that time. And then from there, that's where they make the connection with some of the providers that we mentioned earlier. So if it is housing at that particular time, then that's the connection with One Roof and some of the housing providers. If it's food service at that time, then there's also providers to connect them with that as well. And so Urban Alchemy kind of acts almost like a case manager to make sure that they get through the processes that they need to get through.
Okay, and if people are in places that are clearly inappropriate, what, how does the handoff get made to the city to, for instance, for instance, the bridge under Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard? Would they refer back to the city to fence it off or somehow secure it? Because I know they wouldn't do that, or I assume they would.
No, that's correct. So on the state right-of-ways, they have made us aware, and we've been trying to work with the state to get fenced, to either fence it off or keep the area clean, clear.
So that's ALDOT? So we might wait for the rest of our lives? But that answers my question. Thank you.
And to answer your other question, thanks to Kelvin Dacher. SOAR stands for SSI and SSDI Outreach Access and Recovery. It's a national initiative designed to increase access to Social Security disability benefits.
Okay, so SOAR, say what SOAR is again.
It's the SSI and SSDI Outreach Access and Recovery.
Outreach Access and Recovery. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question is about ALDOT because, you know, the people under the interstate are offensive to us, you know, under I-65 and downtown. So I know it's ALDOT, but are we working with ALDOT? Or trying to work with ALDOT? Or gonna try harder to work with ALDOT? I, I know she's suggesting that it may be, you know, they may not respond, but... But we're not gonna stop, are we?
What? No, we're not gonna stop. I should stop there. Just, trust me, I should stop there. Just let me talk to you.
Well, and if I can go back just for just one second, that particular location, the problem is that the people that are under the bridge are stealing from people in the neighborhood, and then we assume taking their bounty under there where there's plenty of room to store it. But there was a very nice homeless man about twenty years ago in my neighborhood named Bicycle Bob. And he was beaten to death under there by one of his friends, I guess, because he had something someone else wanted and they got in a fight. So I think about him a lot because he was a nice man. And I think about him, and I think it could happen again tomorrow. It could happen today. It could be happening right now. So I think about that location and how secluded it is. I wouldn't go down there, but somebody's got to. So it's just that it has a personal connection with me. It's not just the thievery that irritates the residents, but it's other things that go on amongst humans.
So that sort of leads to a question that I have is that, you know, people experiencing homelessness are an especially vulnerable population. You know, there's mental illness and addiction issues and things like that. And unfortunately, there are people who, you know, take advantage of that and predate on, on those individuals. And so, you know, I guess my question is, is that as Urban Alchemy is, you know, moving about, building relationships, are they also trying to, you know, identify the individuals who are, you know, the predators to this population?
Yes and no. The yes is this is in coordination with BPD. We don't necessarily want Urban Alchemy to engage from an enforcement standpoint.
Right.
I will tell each of you, there's been significant attention, resources in this collaboration with Special Operations, South Precinct, and especially North Precinct, Swiss District, other areas, but particularly Second and Fourteenth, where there's, you know, the hand-to-hand transactions. We are targeting the predators. We are targeting those who are actually selling drugs to our most vulnerable. Intentionally designed. We just had a meeting about last week, or we can have... And intentionally designed, uh, we just had a meeting about last week or we can have ago. Last week, about 90 minutes with all the business owners in the Switch District. And um, all BPD Command Staff was their chief of police, deputy chief of patrol, deputy chief of special operations, captain of North Precinct, narcotics. This is a emphasis on and is directed for me. Focus on those who are preying on our most vulnerable and who are actually selling narcotics and any form of drugs to those, so we can arrest them.
Okay, great to hear. Another question that I have is, is um, a while ago, we actually, actually entered into a contract with uh, consultants um, who were tasked with developing a, a plan uh, for the city to, you know, address homelessness. Um, so can you give us an update on where they are uh, in, in development of that?
Absolutely, so their, their time with us ended in May and they've produced a report that we will be prepared to share, but it's really good. And I'm really proud to say that many of their recommendations are well underway, but we will share that um, with you guys really soon.
Can you remind me the name of the?
Jennifer and Myrtle.
Okay. Okay, and so no specific date on when that might get to the council? Uh, just sometime in the future?
As soon as the mayor sees it, he hasn't seen it, and then we'll, we'll share.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, go ahead, uh, Prette Alexander. Yeah, 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 I'm finished.
All right, thank you. I do just want to ask one additional question. I know uh, we had not asked for this today, but do we have an update coming or just see where we are with the Faith Chapel Care Homelessness Initiative? And any plans to bring us an update on that or how this may correlate? Perfect, okay, thank you. That was it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm especially curious about that too because um, you know, especially in relationship to the situation that we have with, you know, ALDOT and their unwillingness to be responsive. You know, what I have observed is, is that, you know, we're trying to be, you know, responsive um, to the concerns of the broader community. Um, but that often results in these individuals being just displaced from one place that they're, you know, not really supposed to be to another place that they're not supposed to be. So um, we really need, you know, a, a place where they can be welcomed.
I just want to publicly say very grateful for the team behind me, grateful for One Heart Urban Alchemy. Also grateful for you, you know, something is being done that hasn't been done. Um, even with the budget showing that this is a priority by putting those funds in there, coupled with what the twins recommended. Um, and how do we be more strategic and collaborative for the public-private partnership to assist in accelerating, moving beyond emergency shelters to more sustainable housing, including this pilot project. So I feel comfortable with the progress. I think we'll see more probably the next 45, 60 days. Unfortunately, it doesn't move as fast as we want. Uh, but there are many, many things that are happening from a, from a strategic standpoint, as well as funding resource standpoint and public-private partnership standpoint uh, to accelerate the wraparound piece, uh, supporting decreasing our homelessness. You know, the next piece of this, and I don't want to say it publicly, and you and I, you've shared this, so I'm actually quoting you. We're gonna have to get the state um, to have a law that makes it illegal for other cities, whether it's Greyhound or putting them in the back of their police cars or whatever, uh, public vehicles they have and bringing them into our city. We're also gonna have to partner with UAB, this is separate from the state. Um, those are leased from the Psyche Ascent Ward. There are just some things we need other people to do related to our Birmingham's unhoused population.
Right. Um, then one, one final thing that I, I thought about was um, and, and does, does Project Homeless Connect still happen?
It does not.
Okay, that, that's fine, because you know, what I see here is, is that, you know, with Urban Alchemy helping us, you know, that type of work is happening now on a daily basis um, instead of one day a year. Um, and that was, you know, something that in, in um, having to, you know, think about this issue over the years, um, and talking to individuals in other cities. Um, you know, there are places where that type of um, intensive outpouring of services happens multiple times a year. Um, and, you know, here in the, in Birmingham, it was a, a one, once-a-year event. Um, but with Urban Alchemy, you know, building a relationship with these folks on a daily basis and helping, you know, uh, direct them to services uh, that they need on a daily basis. Um, that seems more appropriate to me than, you know, one day out of 365, so. Good, good to see. All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott.
One last question. The situation that was mentioned by one of our colleagues on Tuesday, has, has that been? Fixed?
Yes, also being investigated, but the answer is yes.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right, counsel, um, we have one other item on our agenda to deal with um, from the April meeting. Um, and that is, uh, as you recall, um, during our April meeting, we discussed uh, the short-term rental ordinance. And I believe we've been provided with a draft. Were there any updates that staff wanted to provide to us at this time?
Good afternoon, Julie Bernard, I serve as Assistant City Attorney in the Office of the City Attorney. Um, yes, I apologize for, you know, getting the draft to you, you know, today, but it's been, I've been trying to go back and listen to the meeting and find, you know, look, listen to some of what was said and check back on some of the things I have on Counselor Abbott. Um, I think you were correct, the drafts got confused. I have renamed the draft with today's date, so we know what we're working with. And it's updated with, it's the updated one with your recommendations in it. Um, I have made some changes based on some of the discussion, you know, added in. I know you wanted a definition of resident, I really haven't defined it, but you know, kind of know, or we want to say resident of the city or resident of the property. And, you know, when I look in the dictionary for definition of resident, it's like one who resides somewhere and then you have to look at.
Or a period of time.
Yeah, for a period of time, and that, that can get tricky. You know, it's either the owner or they're subject to a long-term lease. I'm not sure exactly, but we can, we can work that out. But that's, I was trying to work with that definition. Um, there are a few other things I added in, some of the, um, the more specificity that we talked about related to the tax and added in something about using the uniform garbage carts. I mean, all of this may need to be refined a little bit and we did kind of need some final direction, you know, of where we're going with the council to finalize all the language. But um, I tried to capture what we had discussed through the last couple of meetings or things have been discussed to um, make some of the changes. Um, I believe I remember Counselor Abbott asked about striking the language about somebody, you know, about the age of the person and the thing about the reviews. And I've got that line struck through. Um, I left and, and one of the big things was going straight to revocation instead of going through the suspension process. So, you know, there's, it's all pretty much what we talked about, but we do need, I guess, some final direction on where we'll be from the entire council. For final draft. Don't know if this.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, and, and I, I appreciate us receiving this. I wish we'd received it earlier where we could have actually read it.
Yeah.
Ahead of time, but since we didn't, um, I will be delighted to go through this and make sure all of the changes we talked about are here. Uh, because I got so many complaints about these things that I can't sleep at night. And I'm tired of it. I'm very tired, period, from being disturbed enough by the complaints to not be able to sleep. I don't know whether anybody else has maybe as many as I do or maybe the people that rent the ones in my district are just less well behaved. But I have just about had it. And that's not good because people who've reached their limits, you know, they do crazy stuff. So the crazy thing I'm going to do is read this very thoroughly and see
Yeah.
what can be done to deal with these things and our poor residents who are long-suffering and, uh, and continue to suffer by these things being.
I definitely appreciate your eyes on seeing, like I said, I've been listening and listening to the last meeting trying to, you know, capture. So I may have missed something, so, you know, so definitely appreciate.
Y'all have my deepest sympathy because you have to deal with people like me. And um, and you know, it may be that, that members who don't have a lot of these things in their districts, you know, they may not be as intense about this as I am, but I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm going to dot every I, cross every T and try to make something that's enforceable because we know that our city is a, just challenged when it comes to enforcement. We're enforcement-challenged. And so there are no new employees that are being advertised to handle short-term rentals that I've seen. There's no extra employees in the operating budget. I'm sure everybody noticed that. So enforcement, administration, who's going to administer it? All of y'all have full-time jobs already. So the administration of this thing, you know, will take employees. And then enforcement will take employees. And we need to make something that doesn't need enforcement because we're not gonna get any. I mean, but we really have to think about all the things we are putting in here and the things, the way we are handling the zoning because some poor person has to administer it and some other poor person has to enforce it. And if we make it too complicated, we'll just be stuck. And I know, you know, like I won't be here, but somebody else will be getting all those same calls, you know, late at night. It's 2:00, 2:00 AM and I'm at my house and this is happening, come out and witness it. I don't want to get dressed and go out and witness it at 2:00 AM. So, you know, I, I just, like I said, I'm a little bit.
Again, there are some things in there with some specificity about noise. Instead of having the police have to refer back to the noise ordinance, have some specific rules for short-term rentals. I know you were not comfortable without, when we talked at planning and zoning, but.
Oh, definitely not, because we have a noise ordinance and quiet, required quiet hours? That is BS. 24 hours a day, you cannot violate the noise ordinance without a permit from the Department of Transportation who will gladly, I guess, give you one. But the fact of the matter, we make short-term rentals sound like that they can violate our noise ordinance because they're at a short-term rental.
Well, that's, that's not the intent. The intent is quiet between this period. And it's supposed to be in companion with the noise ordinance, but to give the police something that they can go off of. But if that needs to be refined, we can work with that.
Well, the ordinance requires that the noise, if the noise can be heard 50 feet from its source by a person with normal faculties, then it's a problem.
Right.
So saying you can't do it between 10 and 10 sort of implies that the rest of the time, you can do what you want.
Well, this ordinance also says they have to comply with the noise ordinance. The, the 10, the, that quiet hour is, that's no noise whatsoever. You know, but otherwise, noise has to comply with the noise ordinance.
Police Department did tell us yesterday, which was exciting to me, that the noise ordinance is going to start to be enforced and that they're going to give the police copies of it, which is very exciting.
I know that is.
After years of not silence, but inactivity.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for this.
You're welcome.
So I, I also would appreciate the opportunity to go through this. But one thing that I see pretty immediately is, is that under Section 1223-7, um, the suspension or revocation of the permit, the entire section that um, talks about, in particular, um, PEP having some, you know, ability to uh, suspend or revoke a license has been struck. So if I'm, remember correctly, you know, when we talked about that in the Planning and Zoning Committee, we, we talked about being a little bit, you know, more aggressive than what the original version has suggested. Um, what the original version has suggested was that the director of PEP could issue a warning on that first um, complaint. And what I had suggested was that um, that the director of PEP could not just issue a warning, but could, you know, immediately suspend or, or revoke, or at least suspend um, on that first complaint. So um, you know, what, what, with the way I see it structured now, my, my concern is, is that the, it looks like the suspension or revocation now is completely within the hands of the council.
Right, it would go straight to revocation. The PEP would only be able to suspend, and this kind of came up as I was working with the food truck ordinance. You know, we had a suspension in there. We decided to take it where it goes straight to a revocation. Um, that, you know, becomes an issue, you know, of enforcement with a suspension is, you know, you've got so many, you've got them advertising online. You've got, you know, like with the food truck, they're mobile, they're moving around. So it kind of becomes an issue for, can we really enforce a suspension?
Yeah, so alternatively, you know, my concern with, you know, again, it looking like, you know, the council has to take action, well, in order for us to do that, we've got to send the property owner a letter. You know, then, and set a date, and then advertise the date, and then have a public hearing. You know, in the meantime, a month has gone by and they're still operating. Um, so that causes some concern for me. If we've got a complaint, you know, I, I think what everybody's expectation is, is that, you know, there'd be some immediate action um, to, to address the issue and, you know, not a situation where the source of the complaint is allowed to persist while we're going through our bureaucratic motions um, until we can get to, you know, a decision about whether or not we're gonna revoke.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So we can look at doing something like that where it's an immediate suspension and then go.
Yeah, I mean.
At that point. I just, like I said, it had been a concern as to, you know, being able to really enforce a suspension, you're still kind of in the same situation. But, you know, that may work. when we get, if we get a scraping service or something. Yeah. It just kind of depends on what tools we have, but I will rethink that.
Okay. You know, I don't know if I've got a, a good suggestion. I'm just expressing what my concern, so.
Yeah, I understand. Talk about that.
The, the, you know, the council, a council action is not going to be as nimble as what, uh, in, you know, administrative action from a staff, city staff member-
Right.
-can, can do.
Yeah.
So, okay. So what I'm gathering is, is that we need some time to digest this.
Yeah, definitely.
Right?
And perhaps, you know, thinking about-
And all the missing, missing people need to digest it too.
Right.
And perhaps what we need to do is, you know, we could have like an immediate suspension for a period of time and it comes, you know, to the council to review as to whether it should be revoked or they allow to continue. Maybe we can do it that way. So, it's always, you know, from my perspective, it's always better to have the council be the final decision maker on things.
So if suspension is an issue, you know, and maybe we could just go immedi- immediate revocation.
With an appeal.
Right, with an appeal, um, to the council, so.
Yeah.
In, in the case, you know, again, my concern is that, you know, there not be two weeks, three weeks, you know, a month before we can get to some sort of resolution.
Right.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna make a decision today because we can't. So how much time? Should we have another meeting to discuss our various thoughts about this? Should it go back to committee? You know, we need to decide on an action because we've had six or seven or eight weeks between the last time we did this, and time is passing and these people are still rocking and rolling and having a big time. So back to committee, back to the committee of the whole, back to the future.
Anybody is welcome to email, I will email it out to everybody so that the people who weren't here get it. And I'll email it out, and anybody's welcome to send comments. I know you will, Counselor. I, I do know that.
I will, especially if you send a copy that with, you know, that I can change.
Right, right.
With my own peculiar color. So, next committee of the whole, back to planning and zoning, what do we want to do?
Yeah, I wish we had a full cohort of counselors here to help us, you know, arrive at a, a good decision, um.
Deal with it as a whole because we all need to be refreshed on everything and ready to act, I think.
So the next one's committee of the whole?
But, but could it be like item one and we spend enough time?
Sure, yeah, um.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to.
I think it's-
Two, as a reminder, the zoning piece was not discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting, and that's still a big piece of the whole thing. So, um, I don't think that there's been anything, any changes, anything written, you know, other than what we have from, yeah, from P and Z and from the, the discussions we've had with a few of the other counselors, not on P and Z. So, but that's, you know, another piece of it that we need direction.
And we probably still need to simplify even more because it's messy right now. We've got too many choices and we've made too many choices and we need to simplify so anybody could understand it. What, what you can do and what you can't do. And all the enforcement people can really understand what you can do and what you can't do so that we can put a halt to the insanity that we've got going right now with people just doing whatever they want because nothing's clear. Next committee of the whole?
Well, so-
We may have to change it.
Next committee of the whole will probably, excuse me, next committee of the whole will have to be, um, a special called committee of the whole, uh, if we do it in July, uh, because, um, myself, Pro Tim Alexander, Counselor Smithman, perhaps even Counselor Tate, will be at the, the NLC Summer Leadership, um, meeting, um, in Columbus, Ohio. So, um, you know, but, so that falls at the regularly scheduled committee of the whole. So the July committee of the whole would, would have to be a special called, uh, committee of the whole meeting. But we should be able to make that, you know, happen, uh, later in the month, in July.
The following week is bad for me.
Maybe we could do it a week early?
Well, there's five weeks in July, so, um, could even-
We could do it on that free week when we don't have any meetings.
The twenty-one to twenty-fifth is, is bad for me, but the next week, the fifth week or the third week? No, the second week.
Yeah, so we'll tentatively look at July thirtieth.
July thirtieth, okay. Will that give more time for the zoning stuff to catch up? Or is that not gonna change? Well, you know, and I was gonna say that, you know, that would be good and if I get comments back from Counselor Abbott and from others, so we can do some things, you know, before then, that would be good.
They could potentially line up in that amount of time, the zoning and-
I can, so that I'll let Ken speak to that.
Yeah, the zoning that we have so far is just a recommendation from P and Z. And it's just to, it was the choose your own adventure. We want to see this in this district, this in the next district, so.
You gave us too many adventures to choose.
Well, we wanted you, you know, it seemed like every time we went back to ZAC, they selected something different. And so we wanted to give you guys all of the options on the table and let us know what you want to see in the, in the ordinance, so.
And of course, we're trying to imagine what it's going to be like. And some of my imagination is not that good, so, anyway, we'll work on it.
But we can-
So how do we resolve the choose your own adventure zoning options? I mean, I mean, the ordinance is one thing, but how do we?
Well, they provided it to us and we were supposed to look at it and decide what we wanted to do. And we did that in committee, but then when we had committee of the whole, we got bogged down in the ordinance and we never got to the zoning.
Right.
So the zoning is still, you know, the ZAC, of course, recommended we not allow these things in residential districts. We decided to ignore that, but that means we have to go back and look at each little zoning classification and decide what we want to let happen. And there were, what, seven choices under each one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, and then you had to think about hosted homestay.
So I, I was briefed on it in detail because I missed that committee of the whole. But, you know, when time goes by, it's like-
And, and that, that's a lot of time goes by.
I need to be totally reeducated on it.
And, you know, another issue, you know, hosted homestay was mentioned, you know, if that's gonna be a consideration, there may be changes that we need to make in the other part of the ordinance. So that's why we kind of need to know which direction we're going because there are some things that may, you know, that we may want to say, you know, have different level of regulations depending on whether it's a hosted homestay. I did put one thing in there because we did talk about some hosted homestays may have a separate entrance from the home entrance. And there was a suggestion made about the cameras. Um, I think, I think that may have been in a discussion with Counselor Clark. I don't remember, but there was a, someone suggested that, you know, if you're in, if there's a separate, we need to make it clear that the camera should be at the entrance to the short-term rental portion of the home and not the residence portion of the home. So, um, so it's little things like that, that if we incorporate that ho- hosted homestay idea, there may be other changes to make to the other part.
So when we, um, when this was still in, uh, committee, Planning and Zoning Committee, you guys were trying to schedule meetings with each of the counselors to sort of get, go and go through this in detail with them. Were you guys successful in meeting with all of the counselors?
We met with all but two, I think. We met with three initially, uh, Counselor Clark was not available, but we met with you after the committee of the whole meeting, but there two that we haven't met with.
Okay. Well, it would suggest that you guys continue to try and make that happen, um.
So our tentative meeting is the thirtieth of July?
Right.
Well, it's only six more weeks.
Right.
That is a long time. I won't, I don't get to forget it.
Yeah.
So could we poll and maybe just see what the availability is before setting that date, the thirtieth, and-
When do y'all, when do y'all leave? When do y'all leave in town?
It's the week of the, um, the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, I think are the, the dates.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause there's no committee of the whole on that day on my calendar, so maybe y'all already announced you weren't gonna be there.
Well, yeah, so the regularly scheduled committee of the whole is always the third Wednesday of each month. So that, that would be, normally that would be July sixteenth. So we're, since we're gonna have four counselors out, I'm s-
And then the next-
I mean, we need to do a poll, obviously.
Yeah, let's, let's do a poll because we need to figure out, but we've got three people missing.
Right.
So, we don't want to leave anybody out.
Okay, so, um, I'll just make a motion that we defer this to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's, uh, approved and I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda, so.
I'm in the turn.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. It'll make me have a nervous boat down if we have to keep on having six weeks and I can never meet it.